Board of Commissioners Staff Meeting, October 3rd. Wow, we're already in October. Twenty twenty-three, I'm going to ask everyone on the dais to introduce themselves.
Chrissy Rishel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerall-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
John Brugan, Assistant County Administrator.
Michael Freeman, Legal Counsel.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. Welcome, we have quite an agenda today. We are in the budget process, but first, we have a presentation by Metro. If you'll come forward and introduce, I don't know yourself and who's with you.
All right, I'm Darryl Haley, CEO and General Manager of Metro, and I've got with me Hilleh Chamut. He is our Chief Strategy Officer and Director of Planning and Development. We're really excited to be here today, and we all know that transit is the great equalizer in our region, and because of your leadership and the voters of Hamilton County, we are actually in growth mode, and we're really proud of what we're building. But because of the voters and the leadership in our community, today, we're here actually to talk about a little something different. We're actually here to talk about twenty-five percent of the Issue VII money actually going to fix roads and bridges in our community, and actually driving some safety and really sidewalks and nice things for the community, fixing roads and bridges in our community. I'm going to talk a little bit about the first three years. The first three years of the Infrastructure Fund. Year one, we awarded two-hundred-and-twenty-seven million dollars of the tax that came through Issue VII to fix roads and bridges in our community. Of course, two-hundred-and-five million dollars of that award went to the Western Hills Vial to rebuild the Western Hills Vial, which we're all really excited about. And then year two, we awarded another thirty-six projects, which is thirty-nine-point-two million dollars. Year two, the dollar amount was able to go up because we used the proceeds from prior to year one, the tax that came in, to bump that up. And then, of course, year three, we were actually able to award twenty-seven-point-eight million dollars for twenty-nine projects. The thing we're really proud of is there are thirty-three different municipalities in Hamilton County that's been able to get awards to fix roads and bridges in their communities. I'm going to ask Hilleh Chamut to come up and spend a little time. He actually has a slideshow that will show the before and afters, which will really show what the improvements to the community and improved safety to the community that these projects brought.
Thank you, Darryl, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
As you heard from Darryl, about thirty-three different jurisdictions within Hamilton County took advantage of this program over the past three years. And we're going to just show you some of the progress and the improvements that have been done throughout the county using the Transit Infrastructure Fund. This is a project in Village of Addiston, the Main Street improvements, when they received two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars. And you can see all the pictures, all the slides. The picture on the left is the before, and the one on the right is obviously the after. They could improve this the before, and the one on the right is obviously the after. They could improvements, not only for the roads, but also sidewalks and other amenities that benefit transit riders as well. Village of Lincoln Heights, they received one-point-two million dollars, and the project's almost done. Village of Ginn Hills, Faragot Road and Enfield Street improvements. Again, it's improving safety for everybody, for pedestrians, with better delineated crossings for pedestrians, signage, and so on. That's also improving the safety of the pedestrians, as well as the vehicle drivers. This is on Montgomery and Sycamore Township. Again, the addition of these sidewalks is just tremendous to make it safer and for people to be able to reach destinations on their foot if they didn't have a vehicle. Anderson Township, again, improvements for the roadway, as well as the sidewalks connecting to businesses and other destinations. Delhi, again, I mean, that sidewalk in the pictures on the right just extends so many hundreds of feet and yards, again, improving the quality of life for these residents. Mount Healthy, this whole intersection and portion of that roadway was also upgraded. The beauty of that slide is, if you look at the house at that corner, the before and after, after the project was done, the owner of that house painted their house and made improvements to the house. So the residents are realizing that there is a benefit of these projects. It's adding value to their properties, and now they're taking care of their property even better. That was really a nice example of that. And instead of Cincinnati, again, major road improvements there. They received two-point-four million for that project. And Springfield Township, Galbraith, again, that was a major project that was just completed in the past few weeks. And that's the last one, Gulf Manor. And as I said, I mean, these are just a few examples of the many projects that took advantage of this program over the past three years. And we've just made the announcement of the third round awards. And in the next few months, probably in February, don't quote me on that yet, but we will have the signing ceremony, and you'll be invited to that. And then, early spring next year, around March, we will make the announcement for Round Four projects. So that's when applications would be, the program will be open to receive applications for Round Four. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Darryl.
I couldn't come without at least spending a couple of minutes talking about the bus system. The voters of Hamilton County put their faith in us to actually improve our bus system and create a system that really fit into their lives and make a difference. I want to thank the voters of Hamilton County, the people of our community, because when we built Re-Enventing Metro, we built it with them. We went out to the community, we asked them what they needed, how it would fit in their life, and we built a system around what they said they would really like to see. One of the things I'm also really proud about is after we got it built, we went back out to the community, and we showed them what we built. And once they saw it, they gave us additional tweaks and whatnot they'd like to see. So then, we then made those tweaks. So we rolled out our new Metro Now, which is an on-demand service in four different, in two neighborhoods we've rolled out this year. We're rolling out four more next year. We built a new Northside Transit Center. We have three more transit centers on the map right now that we're going to build, that we already have federal funds to build. One in Wanted Hills, one in North College Hill, and one in Uptown. New improved weekday service, more frequency, a ton more weekend service, a lot more Saturday service, a lot more Sunday service. We promised the community six twenty-four-hour routes, but we went back out to them and asked them, is this what we heard you say? They said to us, we'd really love a crosstown, so if we don't live on those corridors, we can connect to the twenty-four-hour route. So when we delivered our twenty-four-hour routes, we delivered seven routes, six new crosstown routes, so you don't need to come all the way downtown to connect, which shortens that trip time. More frequency, increased service out in the county, even more to come, free Wi-Fi and charging ports on our buses, electric vehicle charging stations at our parking rides, and we're working on a regional pair of transit coordination that I've spent some time talking to you all about, that we're real excited that we'll be rolling out. And the last slide, oh, I got one more before the last one. And the Greyhound Bus Terminal, when it moved, one of the things you all asked us, could we connect Metro to the Greyhound Bus Terminal? So we now have service to the Greyhound Bus Terminal seven days a week, and the usage of that route is really improving. And the last thing I wanted to show you all is the results of what we're building. How does a community see the service that we're building? The map that you see up there, our transit agencies around the country and all of the transit agencies in our region, and this is the return to ridership post-COVID. And as you can see, the Golden Rod Line is where we are. The dark blue line is the country's average. We are well above a hundred percent of pre-pandemic ridership, and we are one of only two or three transit agencies in the country that's above pre-pandemic ridership. So if you look at the agencies on the left side of the screen, and you can see where they are in comparison to pre-pandemic ridership, and you can see we're heads and shoulders above the rest of the country. And I am really proud of the citizens of Hamilton County and what we're doing to build and drive equity into this region. I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, first of all, thank you, Director. Thank you very much, CEO. I want to just take a minute to go to, talk about Slide fifteen real quick. Not to put it up, we don't have to put it up, but the Metro Now, I just want to put a plug in, I call it the Uber without the Uber prices.
Yes.
Two dollars, I mean, I don't know, anything you can get for two dollars, especially with the gas prices and everything going. So, and I want to say that as I've been in the Sharonville area and different areas, I've seen, I think I've seen one in Colrain too, on Colrain Avenue.
Sure have.
I saw them moving and grooving.
Yes.
And to be able to transport families and be able to, you know, because it's hard when you're in those areas to get to, say, the Target and then get back home without having to take a whole bus to another location and then switch another bus and still walk, and then you got the groceries that you gotta try to... So I just wanted to put an extra plug in for Metro Now, and just, like I said, encouraging folks, and then to have it available when you need it, not necessarily saying, oh, I gotta go get the groceries when this bus comes. You're able to go get the groceries and shop and those kind of things that you need it. And I also want to say that I know that we had passed a, in one of our budgets, or one of our resolutions, we passed, they're going to do some upgrading in Sharonville facades for their small businesses. And I just thought about Metro Now, like, wow, they'll be able to go directly to those businesses. The other thing I wanted to have you talk just briefly about was the Greyhound, because I know my office and probably all of our offices were getting calls because Greyhound was moved out of downtown Cincinnati, and people were saying that there were some issues. And could you just, I know you went past it really quickly, but for those who are watching and have concerns about where Greyhound Now is located, I believe Arlington Heights is the area.
Yes.
So could you talk a little bit about that?
Your offices called us and said people were calling saying they couldn't get to Greyhound anymore once. So we actually created a new route to connect to where Greyhound is now, and that route connects to other routes. So everyone in Hamilton County can now connect to Greyhound seven days a week to make sure they can make those connections. Also, I want to add something, when you were talking about Metro Now, it is on-demand service, you use an app, you tell it you want a vehicle to come, it will come pick you up. And if you're a parent and you have two small kids under thirty-five inches, the two kids ride free with a paying parent. And the results are starting to come in, and I'm really proud to say that the number-one location for both zones that we've rolled out is Kroger's, which means people are connecting to Kroger's where they can spend less on their food instead of going down to the corner store. They're going to Kroger's, which I believe means the community will eat better and be healthier and things like that. So it is delivering exactly what we wanted it to deliver, to drive equity into these regions, and we can't wait to roll out the next four next year.
Thank you. The other thing I wanted to highlight is these locations for roads, because I think people got a little confused because they're hearing a lot about the railroad, wherever they stand on it. I got some calls about people saying, well, I thought we voted to do roads. Are we not going to be able to do roads with Issue VII? And I'm happy, I guess, I'll let you answer that. Roads, because that was something that was sold to the voters that we're going to be, you're going to still be able to do roads.
Twenty-five percent of the tax, the sales tax from Issue VII, will continue to go to fix roads and bridges in Hamilton County for as long as that tax exists. It is part of the language, it will continue to, and every year we'll do a call for projects, and we will continue to award twenty-five percent of the sales tax from Issue VII, fixing roads and bridges. So if the railroad passes, that will be more roads and bridges that we'll be able to fix. We're really excited.
Wanted to hear you say it versus me saying about the roads, because people were asking about that.
It will continue.
But you ran over it real quickly, but I wanted to say that these roads, what I'm seeing there inside the city of Cincinnati, as well as throughout municipalities in Hamilton County, is some of the areas, you have Gilbert Avenue, so seeing some things, Harrison Avenue, Colrain Township, Deer Park, Forest Park, Gulf Manor, Green Township, Green Hills, we got Sutton Road, Crookshank and Anderson Ferry Roads, Springdale Roads, Adams, Jackson, McGee, Carey, and Crestor Road improvements in Lincoln Heights.
Yes.
Simmons Road in Lincoln Heights, Camargo Road. Madeira has Laurel Avenue, Merrymont, Grove Avenue, Merrymont, Pleasant Street, and Dale Park Sidewalk Project, Merrymont again, Mount Healthy, Redding. I mean, it's just spread out, I just wanted to take time so people watching can see. A couple, another road in Redding, Lane, Lane Road, Sharonville, US Forty-Two and Sharon Woods Park Trail, Silverton Section Road improvements, Springdale, Northland Boulevard, Sycamore Township, Kenwood Road improvements, another Sycamore Township, Finley Lane Sidewalk Project, Woodlon, Glendale-Milford Sidewalk Improvement, Wyoming, and the list goes on. But I wanted people who were watching to know that
Thank you.
these projects with the partnership of Sorda is able to hit lots of municipalities.
Three municipalities, and several of them have more than one project. We made a lot of promises in Issue VII, and I am proud to say we are living up to every single solitary promise we made in Issue VII. And the slides that we showed, the before and after, those were just some of the projects from year one. We have two additional years that we've made awards. We have two additional years that we've made awards. There's a lot more projects that are getting road improvements and safety improvements. And we're really proud of the work we're doing.
That's awesome. Western Hills Viaduct.
Yes.
That was one of our biggest components. Where are we?
The Western Hills Viaduct, I believe the contract is going to be signed in our signing ceremony that's coming up. We're ready to move. That $205 million has been awarded to Western Hills Viaduct. I believe it's all the money they needed to finish the project. So there is a new Western Hills Viaduct coming.
Yeah, this board loves the signing. We love signing and we love taking the shovels. We've done a lot of that lately and we're very proud of that.
You'll all be invited to the signing ceremony.
Oh, yes.
That's coming up.
Good, because we would invite ourselves. We've been waiting a long time.
Well, that, that one was a city-county sort of, yeah. So a city-county, in fact, the county was first in on that one.
Yes.
Then the city followed and then Sorda came in after that.
That seems to be a pattern, right? We seem to be leading a lot over here at the county.
That's right, that's right.
Leading, and that, we want to be a leader.
That one happened, yeah. That's top priority.
We do our call for projects next year. We encourage the municipalities that have already been awarded to apply again. And any municipality that hasn't applied, we encourage them to apply to get some awards for some of the money to fix the roads and bridges in their communities as well. Anywhere in Hamilton County.
Well, I would say the only thing, my only criticism right now is you need to change that acronym. Everybody's using that TIF because they think it's TIF financing and all that.
We're working on that right now.
We need a new acronym. Government loves acronyms. We do. We're the home of ABC Soup.
We had a long conversation, I believe it was on Friday, about that. So we are going to come up with another acronym. Because a lot of people ask that question because of the other tips that are out there. So we're going to come up with another acronym.
Sounds good. Open it up, Vice President.
Yeah, thank you. First off, I want to thank you and your team for being at the LAD Town Hall recently. This was a town hall that was sponsored by people with disabilities, and they actually ran it, asked the questions. And last year, we got a lot of questions about transportation. And so Sorda was represented at the table this year. So thank you so much for making that happen. I thought it was really productive and very, very helpful for the folks that were asking the questions because like half the sheet was about transportation. So thanks for doing that. Also, I too am glad about the Metro Now program. I think it's great. I know you're rolling out more and more routes as we go. I also saw at the end of the presentation, the idea and more emphasis for people with disabilities. And we've talked about the through-the-door service. And I'll be anxious to get an update at some point when we've got a little more meat on the bones to, to make sure that we are serving everybody in the community with the transit system. Lastly, I've got a question for you. So as we have jobs coming online, particularly for some of the really big projects, and I've heard this from some of our friends in labor, that with the, especially the Brenn Spence Bridge, the Western Hills Viaduct, the Convention Center District, we've got some really big projects, whether or not the county's involved, big projects, lots and lots of jobs coming to our region. And they had some concern about some of the folks that are going through the apprenticeships. And one of the barriers they, they talk about is transportation. Once they get trained, then getting to the job, because some of them don't have cars, is a real challenge. And so I'm wondering if they've reached out to you at all, or if, if not, maybe we could set something like that up just to make sure that the folks that are being trained for these jobs that are coming online soon have access to those jobs so we don't miss on that one.
We would love to have that conversation. And as we continue to add more service and more frequency, it's becoming easier and easier and easier to catch the bus, quicker trip times, more frequency. So the bus is becoming a really, really good option to owning a car. And even if you own a car, it's a good option to leave your car at home and catch the bus. We would love to have a conversation with any of those groups about how we can connect and, and work. We'll send people to teach them how to ride the bus, to show them where to catch the bus, how to use the app. Any types of conversations they would have, we would, we would welcome that.
Thank you. Yeah, and it's just in response to what we know is coming.
Yeah.
You know, some of these really mega projects and making sure that the people that have been trained to do the jobs have the ability to get to the job site. So I'll make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for all that you do and your staff, as was said earlier. You are the right person at the right time.
I have an amazing team.
And, well, we know we were going to say that, but you have to have an amazing leader. And so I've never seen somebody come forth, you had a team to push forward Issue 7. And people didn't know what would happen. Of course, it passed by great numbers. But everything that you have said, and your team has said, you have fulfilled and you continue to fulfill. And we also know that transportation is a barrier that stops families from being, having economic empowerment. So I am just amazed at the things that Metro is doing, what your staff is doing, and how you are just, and this is because you guys have listened to the people. And when you listen, they, I mean, they not only give you innovative ideas, but they also support if down the road you end up having to ask for more money for whatever reason. But just so proud of how you have pushed Issue 7 and what you've done with it and how you have helped so many people that you won't even, even, we can't even count how many you've helped.
Well, the support that we've gotten from you all has been a big help, and I do mean a big help. And that's one of the reasons I love that last slide. Because it shows that the service that we're putting out is what our community needs. It is driving that equity in our community. As we stand atop of the nation in ridership recovery, people see value in the service that we're putting out. And we're hoping they're using that to connect, not just to more jobs, but the higher-paying jobs, the healthcare, the education, the social services. And we believe that transit can make a difference in this region. And we'll continue to work very hard to make sure that we're delivering what this community deserves.
And I was just thinking about, as I look at the roads, I mean, I've seen these roads. We've all seen these roads and it's, it's, I mean, it's a miracle. And so when you mentioned about the housing, how they ended up painting their house because they were proud. And so if we have a community that's feeling good about where they live, it's going to change the whole climate of our community and our county. So thank you.
If I can end with just saying thank you all very much. We really appreciate your support and the work that you do for our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the update, and we look forward to seeing you back with more great news. Thank you. Okay, now we're moving into the budget presentations. Mr. Brugan, would you like to give some comments before we start?
There's not a lot to say today. This is the second of five weeks of hearings. And I'm happy to, to kick it off today with, with the probate court.
All right, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Just to introduce myself quickly, I am Scott Weichel. I am the Court Administrator for the Hamilton County Probate Court, as you probably all know. This is Judge Ralph Winkler. And this is the Assistant Court Administrator, Susan Lukin.
Good afternoon.
Is this, is this, we're good? So I just, I know we're supposed to be brief. I appreciate those comments, and I like to be brief. First slide here, I just, I think is important to maybe tell the story of who we are, what we do. I think a lot of people don't understand or know what the probate court does. It's very important to kind of see what we do here every day. We have 200 different functions under the Ohio Revised Code that we cover. Many of them are things that most of you know, adoptions, guardianships of incompetent individuals, involuntary hospitalizations of the mentally ill, estates, name changes, trusts, many other things. But I think it's important to understand what we do in the court every day because we do so many diverse things here. We are strictly a civil court. We are not criminal in any which, in any form. Just to get down to the nitty-gritty, I know everyone here likes to be very specific about what we are. As you can see here from this slide, last year we asked for about $4.5 million. This year, our request will be close to $4.86 million, and there's our difference. I think it's very important then to specifically see where that need is. So I tried to point it out very specifically to everyone, where our costs are associated with $399,000. $249,000 in personnel costs, specifically salaries, increased medical premiums, the potential vacation time payouts. $65,000 in additional mental health cases, and I'll talk about that a little bit more here in a second. $75,000 for a construction job that we need to do for security improvements at the court, and about $10,000 in operating expenses. Specifically, what are the drivers of the increase? First of all, just the increased personnel cost. I want to thank you for listening to us last year in our presentation. I asked for four additional employees for our court. Your office was gracious enough to offer us two and funded those two positions. In March, I was aware that we would have some money left in our budget, and I made a presentation to John and to Jeff Aludo to come to you to ask if we could add two additional FTEs unfunded this year in the money you gave us, which you allowed us to do, and I appreciate that. I think it's very important to understand that when we requested that, those were unfunded jobs. So in the $134,000 increase in salary, or two new FTEs salaries. So that's probably somewhere in the $80,000 range. So most of the money is just including the two new employees that we had to add this year. Obviously, everyone understands there's a continued rise in healthcare premiums. It's nothing that the court or the county can control. Those are things we get to do. Of course, we made an adjustment to the vacation payout policy to fall in line with what the HR department and the county commissioners allowed this year. 27.5% increase in mental health cases since 2022. And I'm going to go through here and explain very quickly in just a moment what mental health means to this court, to our court. And maybe it's a little different because sometimes people don't understand what the mental health court does. Our case increase in total, all of our case types, is a 5% increase over the previous year. The Supreme Court required us to make security improvements. Over the last three years, we have taken on, the first year we paid for the improvements ourselves from restricted funds. This year, the improvement was split between the general fund and our restricted funds. Next year, I'm asking for the total in the general fund to pay for the final security improvement that we're required to do. But I understand that is a negotiable thing. The last thing is obviously the $10,000 I discussed in operating budget was just because of inflationary cost of goods and services. I know we all feel that, even when we go to the grocery store every day. I'm going to go back for just a minute. I want to talk about the mental health problem. First, I'd like to probably briefly explain, explain mental health and what it means to the probate court. What we are talking about is the involuntary civil commitment and or hospitalization by court order of individuals who are suffering from a mental health crisis and present a risk of harm to themselves, to themselves or others. Many of the petitions come from local hospitals and law enforcement. When someone is facing being committed against their will or a deprivation of their liberty, they are entitled to a number of protections under the law, including a court-appointed lawyer, an independent evaluation by psychiatrists, notices, hearings, and so forth, all of which are required and expensive. As you can see from the bullet point, the number of cases has risen exponentially since last year. We believe this jump in mental health cases is due to a multitude of factors, including gaps in the mental health care system, the rise in drug abuse and addiction, the aftermath of COVID, and the diversion of mentally ill individuals from the criminal justice system. The court has found ways to offset some of the costs of mental health cases by requiring other counties to pay for the costs associated with their residents. Specifically, what that means is we have one of six mental health hospitals in the state of Ohio. So many other counties ship their individuals to our hospital, and then they become under our jurisdiction. These requests for payment are statutorily permitted, but were never utilized until Judge Winkler took office and looked for ways to save taxpayer dollars. The court has a statutory duty to hear these cases and to protect the rights of those who come before it, as well as public safety. And the county has a duty to properly fund the court to carry out the significant responsibility to these vulnerable individuals and the public. The court, on the other hand, has taken proactive measures to reduce these cases, specifically, specifically with the outpatient community probate injection program. Outpatient community probate allows individuals who were previously hospitalized under a court order and who have stabilized to be released to outpatient services subject to the court's jurisdiction. Outpatient community probate provides a safety net of monitoring and support in the community by treatment providers in partnership with MAP and Mental Health Recovery Services Board and the probate court to prevent individuals from further decompensating as a result of not adhering to an outpatient treatment program. The outpatient probate injection program is a specific plan that identifies high-risk individuals to deliver needed long-term medication with a goal of reducing psychiatric hospitalization and arrests. In 2022, the compliance rate with this program was 91%. And the program led to a 33% reduction in psychiatric hospitalization and a 21% reduction in arrests among the patients served. Prior to this program, individuals would decompensate and would return to the criminal justice system or require additional hearings for civil commitment. Some court facts. 75% of the court's filers are pro se. Pro se, I'm sure as you know, means oneself or ones on one's own behalf, so they're representing themselves. As case filings continue to increase, the complexity and time required for these cases also increases due to the fact that such a large volume of cases are filed and litigated by the general public, not attorneys. This requires extensive time and resources provided by the court. Pro se filers continue, continue to increase annually. The court has offered a help desk for 20 years with no cost to the county. The court currently provides help for 11,000 residents and attorneys. So the court has offered a help desk to our customers, pro se litigants, and attorneys for 20 years, similar to what some other offices have started recently, but with no additional cost to the county. We were doing this for 20 years. We help more than 11,000 residents and attorneys annually. Our clerks and magistrates are highly trained, have years of experience, and are helping individuals with some of the toughest issues in their lives, all while providing legal information but not legal advice, which the court is not allowed to do by law. As our case volume and pro se filers increases, the court's resources and personnel were stretched to the limit. The additional FTEs added this year have made a tremendous impact on that. Also, we had a backlog of cases caused by the coronavirus pandemic. That impact has been directly, almost resolved by those individuals. So again, I want to thank you for that because we estimated this would take possibly several years to catch up after these cases were filed. We believe they'll be resolved by year's end. So those four individuals you provided were a great asset to the court. Rising employee costs. Employee costs are 85% of our current budget. We have an experienced, public-service-oriented staff, which averages 15 years of OPR service. I can say that currently our employees range from 35-plus years down to the newest ones we just hired because of adding FTEs. The 3% across-the-board vacancy rate is not appropriate standard for the probate court. And I would refer back to bullet point two on this. To provide validity to this statement, the court doesn't have a high turnover like other county departments have. Providing a 3% raise to our employees and then taking that 3% away as a vacancy raise basically provides the court with $0 for increases. The reason our employees stay is because we treat them on a daily, how we treat them on a daily basis and how they are compensated for their work. Again, the healthcare premiums, which are completely out of all of our control. And then last, we continue to need to fairly and competitively compensate employees to retain them. Many improvements have occurred recently to bring new talent into the county's workforce. The county's greatest asset is its employees. Please consider this when allocating salary increases this year. Even though we are able to retain our employees, we still need to remain competitive. We have a very special group of individuals working for the court that are highly trained and specialized in our legal area. Retaining this knowledge is vital. That being said, we believe we have some of the happiest county employees. We do this providing a team approach, merit-based raises, and having a judge that is seen as a coworker. We truly believe the court is a family. I just want to say, the court has not requested a supplemental appropriation or exceeded the approved budget in over 20 years. I have been personally involved in this court's budget. I have been personally involved in this court's budget for over 20 years. We do not go over the budget approved by the commissioners or ask for additional funds during the year. The request will be actually need to operate. We have had a great working relationship over the last 20 years with the budget department. I want to thank John. I want to thank Cheryl. With the county administration, I wanted to thank Jeff and specifically the commissioners. We look forward to working with you in the future. The court generally expands $550,000 from restricted funds to reduce the general fund request. So we use restricted funds to offset the general fund budget we request from you. The court has increased revenue by 15% over the last five years. That again was done through counting, charging other counties for their residents through mental health cases, through exploring other options through the indigent care levy, things and filing fees. The court has also has its own court case management system and IT staff keeping it on the cutting edge of technology for the courts. We are doing things that other courts wish they could. E-filing, having our own website, having all of our cases available online. Everything that other courts in the state want to do, we are doing here because of the staff and because of the judge. Again, I want to thank you for allowing us to come over here today, tell our story. I want to thank you for listening to us last year. And I would just open it up to any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I opened it up, Vice President.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So I'm looking at the personnel costs and the salaries associated with that. So I heard you say that the new employees are a large portion of that. And and then you also talked about increases for current staff. You talked about merit. I assume there's also a cost of living that's given.
Our court gives strictly a merit raise every year.
Okay. So my question then is that the county did a competitive wage study a couple of years ago to make sure that we were on par and within range of like counties and nearby counties. Have you all conducted the same kind of study and does, how does that inform what's in front of us?
Thank you for that question. You actually talked about it with me last year. After the meeting, I had an opportunity to speak to the HR department in the county, and I looked at your market rate study. I took that study, compared it against Franklin, Cuyahoga, any of the bigger counties in the state of Ohio, and viewed what you have in yours to what they are offering to their employees. I would say this, number one, there we can't use yours specifically because we have a highly specialized group of individuals that work for us that are trained legally differently than a regular clerk that may take cash. It's, it's not that type of job. Number two, I know we talk about Franklin and Cuyahoga and these other counties using their market rate study, but I don't think that's fair because I'm not competing against Cuyahoga or Franklin County. I'm competing against clerks that want to work for juvenile, domestic, municipal, and comma, please. Those courts are our competitors, not Cuyahoga or Franklin, where their cost of living or things may be different. But I would say that our salaries are currently very close to what they are currently offering. So I'm not asking for additional funds to go to a market rate study. What I'm asking to do is to provide a good raise for our employees that are here so we can retain them.
To, yeah, it should, let me clarify. So I agree with you that to compare us to just Franklin and Cuyahoga is not a good comparison. However, it is part of the comparison. Franklin is always going to have higher everything than us because they've got so much more revenue than us. Cuyahoga in a similar position, by the way. So we have to compare apples to apples. So it's more of a Cuyahoga, Franklin, Montgomery, Lucas, Warren, Butler. It's, it's the combination of what we consider to be a competitive set because we generally at the county are losing people to Warren County, to Butler County, and into some of the others. But it helps us to better understand what individuals are being paid in other parts of the state for similar work or maybe the same work. And then it, it just helps us figure out what that range is and then get our employees into that range. As you say, we broadly, everybody, we're gonna hear this from everybody. You need to recruit and retain good people. In order to do that, you need to dignify the work with a competitive wage. Flat, right? Everybody agrees. So I was just wondering as we look through some of the personnel costs, because as you say, that's where the majority of the cost is. You know, how, i- if you had done a study where we are in that mix, and if you haven't, that, that's fine. I just was curious if you had. And then the, the wage increases are related to merit. It is, and that's what you're saying. So you've offered the clarity that I need. To, couple, couple other things that you mentioned. So when we talk about some, you talked about the Supreme Court security equipment that you're, you have to, you're required to put in and the cost sharing that has been done in the past between the general fund and the restricted fund. Help us understand how much is in the restricted fund so we can better figure out what that cost sharing should look like.
We have several restricted funds that are mandated by the Ohio Revised Code. They can only do certain things. I, I know you have our restricted funds. You have availability to see those.
I have not gone through that binder yet, but thank you. Yeah.
We have, I think roughly about $5 million in restricted funds, but many of those dollars are allocated in certain ways that they could not be used for a security improvement. They may be used for computer and technology and so forth. So we spend a lot of our dollars on those types of things where we're required to, under the law, to follow what we have to spend the money on. We don't have a large volume of money at our disposal.
So with this particular project, which restricted fund did allow you to spend?
Fund of business.
Okay. And how much is left in that one?
I believe less than a million dollars.
Okay. Okay. And then lastly, you had also mentioned that we are one of a handful of courts that are taking some of these mental health cases. And how, and you, you talked about charging the counties back from once these folks are coming. How do you manage that? How do you determine that? Is it the same, the same cost for all these different, I guess, counties that have individuals coming here? I just, help, help me better understand the mechanics of that.
The state of Ohio Mental Health and Recovery Services Board has a way that we get funded from them yearly by submissions to them based upon costs. There are certain costs associated to a doctor or a psychiatrist or sheriff's fees, so forth, that we submit to the state for. Those, those costs are dictated by them, what the maximum amount can be. Of course, we have to ask for the maximum amount, but that's the same way we charge back counties. We charge them at the same rate we would cha- charge the state of Ohio. So for example, a doctor on a case may be paid $120. That's what we would charge back to the county or the attorney associated to it. Any court costs involve sheriff's fees, any fee that is associated to the case, we charge directly back to the other county.
Okay. So the increase here then is not necessarily for out-of-county. Are you recovering all the costs from out-of-county?
It's, it's Over 90%.
Okay. So that's as much
Drive county residents.
Right. So this is a Hamilton County issue here, right? Not so much that we're, we've got the volumes increasing because folks are coming in from other counties and we're not compensated. This is more of a Hamilton County issue.
We are given a stipend from the state, which is roughly $250,000. Our mental health costs are over a million dollars a year. So we're never going to recuperate that cost.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comments are a little easier for you. But as you looked at the 134,000 salary increase, you said that would compensate for the two ones that were not funded. Does it also compensate for the merit? It includes the merit, so you wouldn't have to need any additional money for not only them, but also for the other ones that are there?
No, it would not.
Okay. So what's your plan for doing that?
Well, in our budget, historically, as you, I'm sure you know, we do not ever add into the budget for a salary increase. I know many departments come over here and ask for 5%. We do not, because our understanding is the commissioners will decide that, and then they will present that to each department. We've done that every year since I've been involved with the budget. Whatever you present to the rest of the county is the same thing we ask for like anybody else.
Okay, that's a different way to kind of look at it because some of the departments come and they ask for increases related to salaries. And then you said 85% of the budget is personnel?
That's correct.
How many staff persons would we say that is?
Currently 46 FTEs.
Oh, okay. And you also kind of mentioned it, there are some of the happiest employees.
Absolutely.
And so
Anyone that comes to probate court, they will tell you.
Yeah. And why would you say that? You kind of mentioned it. I know about that great judge over here is one. But just a couple.
That is, that, well, is, I'm sure all of you know, everything starts from the top. Being a family-oriented organization means treating each other with respect, treating our customers with respect, but everything comes from the judge. The way he treats our employees is the way he wants the public to be treated. So we make sure that that's very important to us every day. We do feel like a family. We're a very close-knit group of individuals. We have very little contact with other courts because we're civil, so we're tightly enclosed. And many of us, me included, have worked together for more than 20 years. So I know them personally, everything about them or their families, or I want to know about them. So we are very lucky because we don't have that type of turnover in our office. That makes it a good place to work. And I'm going to come over here and I'm going to fight for them. And I think that's important, the same way you would fight for your people. That's why I present what I present today, and I want to make sure that when I discussed with you how, you know, good of a place it is to work, I want to continue that, and I want them to feel valued when they come to work every day. Like I said, I have 36-plus-year employees. We've lost a 40-year-plus employee. So people don't leave the court because they value their job. They feel appreciated, and they, they feel it's a good place to work. And I agree, and I think it is too. So I think it's appropriate. I come over and fight for it.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Thank you. And and next we have our presentation from the recorder.
Welcome. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, county commissioners and the administration. My name is Scott Crowley. I serve as a county-wide elected official as the Hamilton County Recorder. I am joined here today with the Chief of Staff for the Hamilton County Recorder's Office, Dave Pittinger, a 40-plus-year employee of that office, and Public Information Officer Tyra Jones. The main duty of the Recorder's Office is recording and indexing real estate legal instruments. And one general record series known to be as the Official Records. Examples are deeds, mortgages, liens, leases, other materials. We have a total of 22 employees. Our budget is just below $1.8 million. The highest this budget has ever been from the general fund was in 2003. It was $2.6 million. Despite, despite inflation, wage increases and costs, we are just still nowhere near $2.6 million. We're at just a little below 1.8. I want to go over a few highlights of our office from this past year, 2023. We were recognized by the National Association of Counties within an award in the category of information technology. And that was for the successful launch and implementation of our notification system. Our notification system fights back against deed fraud. And this is for the public. You can register for free and receive email alerts if anyone files anything in your name at our office. This award-winning, award-winning notification system is already having an impact. Since its launch, we are not aware of a single incident of deed fraud. This was launched in April of 2022. Prior to that, we would see sporadic instances. But since the launch of this system, we are not aware of an incident. Again, to the public, please go to our website. You can register for free to protect your home. We are honored to receive this award in the category of information technology from the National Association of Counties. Just highlighting the veteran services that we do provide. This is important to me. I served four years on active duty in the United States Marine Corps. Veterans, we will record and safeguard your DD-214 at no cost. It is not a public record. The only person that can get it is you. We issue veteran ID cards that recognize your military service. These are free. And they can be used as proof of military service for merchant discounts throughout the county. We maintain a list of organizations and businesses to provide these discounts. If you are a business or know of a business that provides military and veteran discounts, please let us know through our website so that we may acknowledge you and pass along to our veteran community. We give out the Griffin Yatman Award. This was created in 1993, presented for excellence in historical preservation. Our two recent award winners are displayed, Margot Cooper and Bart Rosenberg. Margot Cooper did extensive familial research through the Recorder's Office, and that is now on display as an exhibit in perpetuity at the Freedom Center. And Bart Rosenberg, our award winner from 2022, is for his preservation of Presbyterian Fulton Cemetery. That cemetery contains six Revolutionary War veterans and the first-ever public Purple Heart recipient. We are accepting nominations for 2023. So to the public, if you know someone, go to our website. You can go to our website for these three things. To register for the notification system, alert us of businesses that provide veteran discounts, and to nominate someone for the Griffin Yatman Award. Our digitization efforts have been highly successful. Our partnership with the Hamilton County Genealogical Society remains strong. Our records are almost completely fully digitized. Gone are the days for when title examiners need to come downtown to do title examinations. We are now 24/7, where anyone can have access to our records at any time. We are getting close to completion. We are now working on releases and mortgages. And we are coordinating that through the county administration with Mr. County Administrator John Brugan. Let's talk about 2024. The challenges for 2024, we've discussed this at length with the board. It's going to be that new land management record system. If you recall, we moved two employees back into the general fund from the tech fund. They were originally in the general fund, but during lean budgetary times, they were put in the tech fund. We have put them back in the general fund so that we can move forward on a new land management record system that we do need. This is on schedule. We are expecting a go-live date sometime in 2024. We appreciate the board and the administration in supporting us in this transition. Of note, the board and the administration did step up and are willing to pay any gaps in funding for this new system. I am happy to report that that should not be the case. We should be able to fully fund this new land management record system through the tech fund as planned. And actually, Harris is here today on the second floor. We have begun training and implementation today. So let's talk about the budget for a second. So last year, we did go through significant market rate adjustments. We are very appreciative to the board and the administration on working with us to get our pay within market ranges. As discussed last year, we do not do across-the-board wage increases. We analyze each and every position and each and every employee to determine a reasonable pay. This includes the wage study that was provided by the administration last year. And also factored into that analysis was a wage study that we participated in with the Franklin County Recorder. That was conducted by Clemmons and Nelson and a number of other county recorder's offices participated in 2022. Those include Butler, Cuyahoga, Lorraine, Lucas, Mahoning, Montgomery, and Summit. So there is a method to our pay and our pay grades. Similar to this administration, some employ, employees did see a significant increase while others saw no increase. while others saw no increase. And so the budget for this year, the adjusted personnel costs, that is tied to recruitment, investing, and retention in our employees. There's two drivers for this ask. One is the updated pay scale that is provided on this slide, and cost of living adjustment, or COLA. So the numbers from last year when we did our market rate adjustment, they were based on the May twenty-twenty-two pay scale. And as you can see, the twenty-twenty-three pay scale has an effective date of December twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. And when we did the math, it looked like that was a two percent increase, so we factor that into our number. And now for the cost of living adjustment, I'm sure the board will come to a conclusion on that. The numbers I'm seeing right now, I saw somewhere the federal social security will get a three-point-two percent increase. I've also seen from the Consumer Index, the Ohio minimum wage will see a three-point-seven percent increase. So when you add that together, pay scale two percent, COLA, that comes to five-point-two percent, five-point-seven percent. And that increase for us would be anywhere between sixty-two thousand and sixty-eight thousand dollars. We are not asking for that as part of our request. It's more fifty thousand, and that would actually come out to an average of four-point-five percent, which we are flexible with as well. If the board disagrees with that, we're flexible in that number. But that's kind of what drove us into that ask for an adjustment this year. So again, it's the pay scale and COLA, and I don't necessarily know, based on everything, how the county feels about that. So at this time, I will turn it back to the board, I just want to provide one final comment. First, thank you for the support and the resources provided. We are being successful down in that office because of the support we receive. And I would also like to commend the employees down at the Hamilton County Recorder's Office, they're great. Amazing people, dedicated public service servants, and it's an honor to work with them. Thank you, and I would like to turn it over to, back to the board if there are any questions.
Thank you. Thanks, Recorder Crowley. Thanks to the team that's sitting with us today, good to see you. I'm, I just have one question, and you already kind of answered it, and I wish I had asked it of the previous group, and I will have to circle back. Because when we think through, as we're sorting through the budget, and we're, I don't know if you know this, and we probably should have said this from the outset, the request from departments is much higher than our revenues, much higher. Higher than last time, higher than most years, like forty million dollars higher, it's a lot higher. And so we're going to have some difficult decisions to make, and I do want to kind of level-set this conversation relative to that. So when, when we think through personnel costs, because it's always, it's going to be the highest cost for every single department, I suspect. And we think internally about what we're going to do for our employees. Last, the year before last, we did a three percent increase, last year we did a three-point-five percent increase. And so we are always wondering and worrying about the same things that you are, right? How do we retain, how do we recruit folks, and, and how do we get everybody level-set, which you've already done with the market rate study, and I'm grateful for that. And then how do we proceed from there? I heard you say that the four-point-five percent increase is what, tell me if I'm wrong, what you would consider to be the increase for next year, and, and that will be relative to, you know, where we land as well for all the departments. But yours, you're landing on the four-point-five.
So, I mean, to answer your question directly, if I recall correctly with regards to our budget, so we incorporate those numbers into our ask. And then when the administration came back and said the Board of County Commissioners are going to also add on to the percentage, last year, we actually did decline that because we put that as part of our ask. And so in this situation, the two percent from the pay scale change in December twenty-two of twenty-twenty-two, the four-point-five percent can be argued as a COLA, but I would also like to stress that that two percent is also incorporated in there. And you know, four-point-five minus two, then that brings to six-point-five. And so when you consider COLA and pay grade, that actually comes up to sixty-two, sixty-eight thousand. And we're not asking for that. Based on what we're seeing in our office and the numbers, it, the way we did the analysis obviously is more piecemeal. If you just did the average, it would be a four-point-five percent.
So are you saying that the market rate study that you conducted, the increases, not for all, as you say, not everybody got that because they were already in range, but others were not? Those increases for those particular employees were not in last year's budget?
They were.
Oh, they were, okay. Okay, great, thank you. Also, congratulations on the awards and recognition, that's very nice.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your presentation. And I remember speaking to you really when you first came and some of the innovative things you wanted to do, and you're moving forward toward that. You even said that the new land records management system is on schedule. And I, I wouldn't doubt it, I mean, because you knew what vision you had and what needed to be changed and what needed to be kind of tweaked a little bit. I had just a question about the Hamilton County Genealogy Society and your collaboration with them. Is that something new that you started when you came, or was that our?
They have been a significant partner in the Recorder's Office prior to me taking office in twenty-twenty-one.
Okay. And I just want to make it clear that last time you declined a few things as it relates to monetary benefit. And so I just want to make it clear that some departments are asking for a higher, really unrealistic ask, but you, your department is not one of them. And so we, I appreciate that, coming forward exactly what you need and not really trying to get more than what you need, so.
We take this process very seriously, even this year. We do the analysis, and it really is down to the penny. We're not giving money back, we're not asking for more. Because we feel if we ask for more, that money could have been attributed to a different department that needs it. So we take this process very seriously, very painstaking, and we always try to make sure that our requests are reasonable.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, we've, and we've got supplemental information that you all furnished to us related to all the funds, the revenues, expenses. So, so thank you for doing that. Thank you, thanks for coming in.
Thank you, board. Thank you, administration.
All right, next up, we've got Ray Fowler with the Public Defender's Office. Uh oh, we've got someone else. All righty, Ray's here anyway, so.
Hi, Mike Commissioners, good afternoon. I'm Andy Lancer, and I'm the administrator for the Public Defender's Office. I'd like to begin like I did last year by telling you that this is only my second budget presentation, so take it easy on me. On a serious note, again, joining me today is Ray Fowler, the current Hamilton County Public Defender. I'd like to tell each of the Commissioners how appreciative our office is of your continued support of our mission, our attorneys, and our support staff. That support and belief in our mission goes a tremendous way in making Hamilton County our home a more equitable, fair, and just place to live. So I know each of you are quite familiar with our office, and I'll try to be brief. But for those in attendance or perhaps who are watching the meeting, I'd like to say that our office provides legal services to individuals who are deemed indigent according to U.S. Poverty Guidelines. Now, we don't provide every form of legal service. What we do provide is legal defense to individuals charged with crimes whose outcome may result in a loss of liberty. Finally, there's a list of our divisions, and I'd like to draw your attention to our new Adult Services Division. Formed this year, this division provides social work services to our clients who may be in need and goes to our shared goal of providing a more holistic approach to our clients. I have some quick stats here. Since April twenty-twenty-three, our Social Services Division has closed two-hundred-and-thirty-two cases. They've mitigated through the work, they've mitigated eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine jail bed days. So they found alternatives to jail for, in terms of days, for eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine. And we believe that leads to substantial savings for the county. Every day that a client isn't spending a day in jail and getting better treatment and alternative situation to meet their needs, we believe provides savings. As far as caseloads, each of our social work, social services employees has a caseload of about forty clients at any given time. So we're really proud of that work, and I know Ray is as well. Now, we did not formulate our budget for twenty-twenty-four in a vacuum. Instead, like at most years, we had several pieces of guidance that we were required to use when crafting this year's requests. Primarily, it's the twenty-twenty-two Mark Stevens Report. This document was an assessment of our office performed by the former Knox County Tennessee Public Defender, Mark Stevens. This report was commissioned by our internal board, as well as the Public Defender, or our internal board, the Public Defender Commission, whose composition is made up by three appointments made by the Hamilton County Commissioners. This report made several recommendations that are used to form the basis of our budget. The first recommendation was consolidate our offices into one physical location. Mr. Stevens recommended that we institute a succession plan for our next public defender. Mr. Stevens recommended addressing staffing deficiencies among staff attorneys, in particular, our felony division. And then evaluate our salary structures to maintain parity, maintain pay parity with the prosecuting office. Now, for our budget request itself, the public defender is requesting approval of a budget in which expenses are just north of thirty-four million dollars. This is a little bit of an increase compared to last year, and the reason for this can be attributed almost entirely to a significant requested increase in employee compensation. Next year, we are requesting sixteen-point-four million dollars in regular employee compensation. This is, again, an increase over last year. We feel this request is necessary due to a combination of increased staffing, increased staffing requests, and we must ensure that our staff compensation remains competitive in the labor market and is commensurate with both the Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office and other state public defenders offices. The other significant increase in our next year's budget is approximately eight-point-five million dollars for appointed council compensation. Again, when we have conflicts that our staff attorneys can't handle, or we lack the staffing capacity internally, we assign those cases out to private attorneys who then charge back those expenses to the county. As for revenues, we forecast revenues to be in the amount of thirty-two-point-six million for next year. This forecast reflects an eighty-five percent OPD reimbursement rate for operating and indirect costs, along with the assumption that the JFS Children's Services Levy will reimburse our GAL expenses that are not reimbursed by the state. So, again, our office is, our expenses are reimbursed by the Ohio Public Defender. The current rate is eighty-five percent. Now, we have several priorities to our budget requests. Again, these priorities were identified in Stevens' report. The first of which was to create a succession plan for the public defender. So, on this slide, you will see what that succession plan is as recommended to us through Mark Stevens. Our office has initiated the first item in that plan when Mr. Fowler was given a four-year contract extension. Now, we need to shift gears into the recruitment process. How Mr. Stevens envisions it is the office will conduct a nationwide search to include candidates presently in our office. Mr. Stevens, I believe, wanted to ensure that if the next public defender does come from elsewhere, they are given sufficient time to get acclimated to the legal structures of Hamilton County. I think for this reason, he recommended that the next candidate would serve in a deputy role for upwards of two years before assuming the title of public defender at the conclusion of Mr. Fowler's contract. Or I believe, I'm sorry, a year for, year early, on July first, twenty-twenty-five, at which point Mr. Fowler would serve in an emeritus role. The other, the other tricky item with this is, I believe, Ohio statute says that a county public defender has to be licensed in the state of Ohio for at least one year prior to assuming the role of a county public defender. Our next priority is consolidate our offices into one physical location. Currently, as I'm sure you all are aware, our operations are spread out over two locations, the second and third floors of the William Howard Taft Law Center, which is two-thirty East Ninth Street, and the eighth and ninth floors of the one-twenty-five East Court Street Bu, or East Court Street Building. We believe that the East Court Street Building has the potential to be a viable location for one single physical office. In his report, Mr. Stevens cited several reasons as rationale for the request to improve the administrative capacity and efficacy of Mr. Fowler over all Hamilton County Public Defender staff, as well as to rectify an inappropriate location challenge where the public defender and the prosecutor's offices are housed in the same building. So, last year, the Commissioners approved funding for a space need study that has been completed. Total costs for the entire project, I believe, are still being worked out. What our understanding is, is the county facilities has submitted to county administration cost estimates that include both lease and build-out expenses. What remains is to identify and select a funding structure that is agreeable to both Hamilton County and the property owners of the one-twenty-five building. If, if that is approved, it's our, it's our intent to initiate a lease at the earliest possible opportunity and to begin the required construction. And I'd like to reiterate once again that both the lease expenses and the build-out expenses are reimbursable to the county by the Ohio Public Defender. And again, that rate is currently eighty-five percent. Tied with our administration department's request for the new space is to add a new IT programmer position. An IT programmer might be a misnomer. What this individual will do for our office is primarily review body and dash cam footage. So as I'm sure you all are aware, there's been a tremendous emphasis for our police departments to acquire both body and vehicle cameras of late. In addition to this, the state has freed up a tremendous amount of resources for police departments statewide so that they can purchase the, the expensive equipment. As you can see, over sixty-six percent of all county departments employ body cameras. This number is from twenty-twenty-two, so it's probably dated, it's probably even more. However, when, and, and we fully support that initiative. However, when used as evidence, each piece of footage needs to be reviewed and redacted, and this is just a time-consuming endeavor. Currently, it's our staff attorneys who are responsible in partnership with our two existing IT staff to, to do this work. Simply, as more and more departments employ camera technology, the demand for staff to review each recording also increases. We believe our office and our ability to aid our clients would be greatly improved if we had someone on staff devoted to this initiative, given the volumes that we're seeing. Now, in addition to reviewing dash and body cam footage, this person would also be, also be responsible for assisting our current IT personnel, which we have two, with video conference room setups, guest speakers, internal meetings, as well as set up the MOM display units in courtrooms and assist with PC movements and deployments throughout our office. Our next priority request is to hire seven additional felony division attorneys and a paralegal. Again, Mr. Stevens, in his report, identified this as a staffing deficiency within our division. Internally, we believe that the addition of seven, seven attorneys will meet- will meet the challenge that Mr. Stevens challenged us to address, as the slide shows. So, we've experienced a thirty-eight percent increase in felony division case assignments in the last year. Now, we are grateful for your confidence in our office last year when you permitted us to increase our felony staff as well for this year. And naturally, a conclusion could be drawn that, yes, total staff assignments have increased because your felony staff has increased. But what we're also seeing is total assignments. So when you're, when you're combining staff assignments for our staff, as well as those assigned counsel cases in common pleas, we're just seeing more clients going through common police court. And we believe that the level of service for, for those clients, those additional clients, is dramatically better and leads to better outcomes for both the client and our community when a staff attorney of our office represents them as opposed to a private attorney. Now, if our, if we, if that request is approved, we are requesting an additional appellate staff attorney. Over the last several years, we've added staff attorneys in the municipal and felony divisions dramatically. However, our appellate division staffing level has remained stagnant at five FTEs. As our office adds internal staff and takes on more clients, the possibility of appeal, of a client needing a, an outcome appeal to a higher court increases. And currently, we have an appellate, appellate to trial staff ratio of one to thirteen. So what that means is we have one appellate staff attorney for every thirteen municipal and common police attorneys. So if we add just one appellate attorney, that ratio decreases to one to twelve. Again, this isn't a dramatic decrease, but it will relieve some of the caseload pressure that's building up on our appellate staff, and we'll have no doubt continued to file more appeals as we're just seeing more clients. Now, misdemeanor cases are handled by our municipal division. This year, they are requesting one new traffic attorney and one new municipal immigration attorney. As, again, you all are aware, there's a dignity to work and being able to provide for your family. However, one's ability to do that is oft, is often dependent on your ability to have reliable transportation, just like what the earlier discussion was around Sordo. Our staff attorneys are extremely skilled at conveying to municipal court judges the irrationality of jailing someone for a driving infraction. However, we need someone on staff who is knowledgeable and familiar with the kind of Byzantine network of Ohio BMV regulations to ensure that despite a criminal outcome, a client doesn't lose their ability to drive a vehicle to work because they are too poor to pay a reinstatement fee or they're just unaware of the various state programs enacted by the Ohio Legislature that permit certain vehicle license amnesties for certain matters. We are also requesting an attorney who specializes in immigration law. The case Padilla versus Kentucky from a few years ago held that defense attorneys must concern themselves with the broader legal effects of a criminal conviction for their non-citizen clients, and to not do so violates the Sixth Amendment of the United States. Raw numbers, for a variety of reasons, on the number of non-citizens requiring representation through our office is somewhat difficult to ascertain, but we believe that the number is significant, and each of those interactions with the municipal court could lead to a range of outcomes, which includes deportation. Almost all the non-citizen clients in our division, that our division represents are silent stakeholders in our community. They work for local businesses, and their, and their children attend our schools. We believe by working to retain the residency of our clients, this immigration attorney will be able to safeguard their positive financial contributions to their communities. Therefore, for practical, constitutional, and economic reasons, we are requesting the immigration attorney as well. Next, our youth defense division is making several requests. First among these is an additional trial attorney. Like our felony or common pleas division, our youth defense division is also seeing a dramatic increase in caseloads over the years. So, since 2021, staff assignments, these are cases handled by staff attorneys, have increased forty-three percent. Simultaneously, the percentage of total cases retained by our staff attorneys has decreased twenty percent. So, if our staff attorneys, our caseloads are going up by forty-three percent, but the overall percentage has dropped twenty, that means those are being made up by assigned counsel, all those cases. Again, we believe it's preferable for our additional clients to receive legal counsel from in-house staff attorneys from our office as opposed to, like, assigned counsel. And finally, we're requesting a one point six million dollars for salary adjustments. This equates to a ten percent increase for our, for our staff. Per the MOU between county, between Hamilton County and the state, Hamilton County has committed pay parity between our office and the prosecutors. In the last year, despite the significant increase that was given to us, and we're appreciative of it, we've again fallen behind in this area, in particular, among our municipal or misdemeanor legal staff. We have thirty-nine municipal attorneys, and we've onboarded fifteen new attorneys this year alone. The starting salary for our new municipal attorneys is approximately seventy-five hundred dollars less than the starting salary for a misdemeanor prosecuting attorney. In addition to this, we've, we've noticed disparities in other positions within, within our office, including our investigators and some of our administrative support staff. I'm extremely confident you are aware, and I'm sure you'll be hearing from each and every department giving presentations before you, that inflation, the inflation that we are experiencing has also played a role in the request for additional funding. I think it's essential that my office is given these resources in order to ensure that the most vulnerable residents of our community continue to have the best legal staff available to them. And to do that, we need additional funding, not only to recruit staff, but also to retain them. I know this question will come up. We are on pace to lose approximately thirty staff this year alone. And salaries and our ability to compensate them, no doubt plays a role in that. So that, the last slide I have here is summary of what my office is requesting over the next year from a salary perspective. The total net cost of the general fund is four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for next year. Again, this is because the public defender expenses are reimbursed back to the county at eighty-five percent for fiscal year twenty-four. One thing that, one unknown is the build-out for if we consolidate offices. But I'm sure that we'll be having future discussions about that and hopefully find a funding mechanism to get that done. Again, I'd like to thank each of you for listening to my rambling and, more importantly, for your continued commitment to indigent defense in Hamilton County. I'm happy to answer any questions any of you might have.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Thank you, Ray, also for your service. I, I'm curious, so many, as you were talking through the recommendations, so many were tied back to the Stevens Report. I don't have any context for that. What is the Stevens Report?
Yes, so every so often, the Hamilton County Public Defender Commission has retained Mark Stevens, the former Knox County Tennessee Public Defender, essentially to do a staffing analysis of our office as well as just basic consulting. Get a status report, find, get a, a temperature of where we are as an office. Are we being run as efficiently as we could? If yes, great. If not, what are some ways we can get to that efficiency level? The last one was in 2022, and Ray, I believe that we have one in 2014 as well. Yeah, Mr. Stevens has performed several.
Yeah, just so much credence given to this report, and I was just curious.
It was, I, my, the reports are, Mr. Stevens is hired by our Public Defender Commission to do those reports, and they have adopted the recommendations. So, here's a series of improvements that they would like to see our office make.
Okay, thank you. No, I appreciate that. I hear a lot about the Public Defender's Office at my meetings at the CCAO up at the state level because we've been fighting so hard to get a hundred percent reimbursement from the state. We have not been successful yet. The eighty-five percent is helpful, but it's not the hundred percent we deserve. I'm just going to throw that out there. I mean, so it's, it's very frustrating to have this conversation when, you know, you are delivering something that the state is obligated to do generously, I might say, and we're not getting the full reimbursement for the service. So I just want to throw that out there because we'll continue to fight for that a hundred percent reimbursement. So we stand at eighty-five, understood. So, the, Ray, I, the, the succession plan, I'm assuming that you were planning on retiring in the next few years, is that what we're to gather? Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. I just, you, you have served the county so well. Very grateful for your service. How many years have you been here? Eleventh year, okay, thank you. I just want to make, make sure you get your, your kudos. So, the, the idea about the building in the offices, as you may know, we're looking at all things related to our buildings, kind of the portfolio of buildings, particularly downtown, on the downtown campus. We own a number of buildings in the downtown area. And importantly, some of them are associated with the courts with one another, and so it's really important that they all be situated close by one another. And so these two locations are not far from one another. But I'm curious, I think my recollection is we do own the building that is on Ninth Street.
The county does own.
Right, but we do not own the building on Court Street. So help me understand then why we wouldn't prefer to consolidate in the building we own as opposed to consolidating in the building where we have to pay to lease?
Maybe that's, that's the solution that needs to happen, but there's no available space in 230 East Ninth Street for all of our employees, which is the reason why our youth defense division and our GAL divisions are over at 125 East Court Street.
Okay.
We've consolidated as much as we can in our available space in the William Howard Taft Building. We, we've removed a law library on the second floor, and that's been turned into a cube farm for our appellate division. We have consolidated offices for administrative staff. So now, several administrative staff for our office essentially have time shares in their office in which they work. They come into the office certain days of the week, and they switch it out with the other, with the other staff. And that's an effort to get free up office space for our felony attorneys who are on the second floor. On the third floor, our conference room has been converted into a cube farm for our thirty-nine municipal attorneys.
So you're not seeing this trend where employees in, in part are not working from their offices downtown?
Not at.
That your job doesn't lend you.
It don't, yeah, it doesn't.
So you, you guys are in the office?
You're in the office, yes.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. It's interesting because we're having this broader conversation about our buildings.
Right, well.
It's all, well, you know, if we do this, then what here, and, you know, how does it all kind of piece together? So I, I appreciate you bringing this forward. I think it's really interesting. A couple of other questions. So the year-over-year increase to the general fund that you're asking for, is it the two hundred and fifteen thousand? Was that on the last page? Is that what that was?
The, yes, the, well, that's the hit that we're asking for, for this year. I believe it's four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
So that's the year-over-year increase that you're asking for from the general fund?
Yes.
Okay, increase is larger, but some of it will be picked up, a lot of it will be picked up by the state, right?
That is the portion that will not be picked up by the state.
Okay, got it. And then also, again, informed by the conversations with other county commissioners at the state level, can you tell me how much the attorneys are making? And I know it's different from one to the next, but I get asked a lot as we continue to fight for a hundred percent reimbursement about how much the attorneys here are making?
Yeah, so we do, I, I, following your recommendation last year, I request salary information from Cuyahoga, Franklin, Lucas, Montgomery, and Summit for all of our legal, all of our attorney positions. We are somewhere in that sliding scale. We're not the lowest, we're not the highest, we're somewhere in there. It really depends on the type of attorney, I've noticed. So I don't have the, the information in front of me, but, you know, our municipal attorneys are probably lesser paid than some other departments, whereas our felony attorneys might be more. I'm just throwing that out hypothetically, I don't have the information in front of me.
Yeah, there was.
We are doing that work.
Okay, and the reason I ask is because there was some conversation with the legislators when we were kind of debating this. Some were offering that they thought some of the attorneys were being paid in excess, I mean, I don't know. They were asking, and I said, well, I don't, and I, my understanding was the felony attorneys are being paid more than the other attorneys because of the type of work they're doing?
Yes.
Right, so, yeah.
Our felony attorneys, we, essentially, our municipal attorneys, the goal is for them, or the plan, professional plan, the track is for them to start as municipal attorneys and work their way up to felony attorneys. As they move up that hierarchy in our office, they are compensated to reflect.
And it's some, some of it has to do, I, we suggested, to availability of attorneys that, you know, want to work in the Public Defender's Office and do this kind of work. So, I mean, it's, it's all relative to the job market. So, okay, and then, the, the last thing I think you said, and this is my last question. Were you, did you say you were asking for a ten percent increase across the board?
Well, it's, it's part of a budgeting, how, how to account for it. It would not be across the board, so I believe the prosecutor's office is requesting five and a half percent. And then we need to adjust, our goal is to get parity in those positions that we identified is out of step with the prosecutor's office to make that adjustment, and then merit increases. So the, one of the problems is with across the board, or any increase for that matter, is salary compression. We want to, we, we will need to adjust several position salaries, in particular, in our municipal division. In our municipal division, again, starting salaries are seventy-three thousand dollars for our office, and the prosecutor's office is at eighty. What I would like to see is the ranges get unified and that floor get moved up. But as we move up that floor, well, how do we compensate attorneys who've been in our office for several years? So they will need an adjustment as well to reflect that tenure and merit and being great employees for our office and we're fighting for the clients.
Okay, I just.
So it's a combination of all.
Yeah, and once again, I just, you know, put this in the context of the overall budget because we face the same issue. You know, with the county employees that are not under these different departments. And so it's, it's the same equation. You know, we want to pay people fairly, dignify the work, but do it within a budget. And so that's the challenge here. So I just want to say that out loud because I, I won't disagree with you about any of what you've said. It's just a matter of what we can afford. And as I've stated earlier, we're way over by way of the requests from the different departments. So we're going to have to figure that out somehow. And we're all part of the solution, I, I'd like to think. All right, well, thank you.
We're definitely part of that solution as well. I mean, we're willing to do what we need to do to help the county.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, and it's, I mean, this is such important work. We're fighting like crazy at the state level, but we'll, we'll continue to, to work with you here. Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First thing comes to mind for me is there's a lot of moving parts in your proposal. Thank you, first of all, for all you do. You said you would like additional seven attorneys. And so have you looked at the possibility of, say, if we approve four attorneys? How you would, you don't have to answer that now, but I'm looking at concessions, how we can give you what you need, maybe not everything you need, but reduce the costs and the numbers. I looked in the back when you talked about the hierarchy of attorneys, and it's definitely going the way you said, municipal appellate and felony. So it's in, in order, in line. I did notice that there are no social workers on here.
We go through a request. I think because the social work unit is relatively new, it's only a year old in our, and we onboarded four or five new staff this year. I think what's happening there is they're learning, they're building the processes of how they're going to operate, building the connections. So for this year, the director wanted to focus on the staff she has on now and get them up to speed and kind of build out the framework of how. and get them up to speed and kind of build out the framework of how they're going to operate. They're still working through this.
Where's the funding for social workers in your summary here?
Well, they're not, those are only the.
For the attorneys?
The additional budget requests. Funding for that is still, is part of our larger $34 million budget.
Okay, so when, oh, this is a little loud. So we were saying that you wanted seven additional attorneys. I'm going back to that because of their caseload. You did a ratio of caseload in here somewhere, 1 to 12 or something like that?
Because we're appellate attorneys.
Okay, it's an attorney, right? So I'm saying the ratio was 1 to 12. You mentioned earlier that social workers have 40 on their caseload. So how are we trying to adjust that as it relates to social workers?
We're, I think we're in constant feedback with the social worker director. I requested during budget time, I checked in with her to see if she needed additional staff. She reported that she was comfortable right now with where she was. But, yeah, that's something that I think we're sensitive to. We're seeing a lot of great things happening from that work, and we want to make sure that it keeps going.
So I know we would have a cost of relocation, as mentioned earlier. Once we relocate, there'd be a cost of renovation within the building that you go into. As it was mentioned earlier, the report that was done by Mr. Stevens was in 2022. So my question is, what if you delayed the move for a year or two years? Because that's kind of quick, the, you know, he makes the recommendation, you're ready to move. It sounds like you're a little pressed as for a staff, but to delay the move for another year or two?
I think as, if we have, one of the big challenges we have, if we would delay it, we've outgrown our existing space. So if we bring on additional staff, there's going to be the question of how much more can we consolidate down our existing offices to accommodate them? We want to make sure that priority office space is given to our attorneys. As of now, it's just hard to envision in our current footprint where we would put additional staff for the medium to long term. Anything over the short term is possible, and I think we've been extremely flexible. I mean, our staff has been extremely flexible in some of the sacrifices that we've asked of them in terms of consolidating down and going to remote, more hybrid work opportunities. And that's not ideal. Attorneys need privacy, and the best way to ensure privacy is through offices.
Okay, I appreciate that. When you look at the recommendations, the Stevens report, it says address staffing deficiency. Did he specifically say seven more attorneys or not?
I think, I have to pull it up. So last year, we were approved seven last year, which we've onboarded. I think where we are is it's our internal goal to take on a larger percentage of the total common police caseload. Because we found that we, our staff attorneys, if they take clients, those clients have better outcomes than those outcomes that are given to our attorneys. I can, I believe the goal over the next two years is to get to that 50% mark. Build, keep building on that, on there, assuming that reimbursement remains relatively high from the Ohio Public Defender.
Okay.
To offset a lot of that cost.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
So, thank you, thanks for the presentation, really appreciate, thanks Ray for coming in.
Commissioner Greathouse?
Yes.
I think we've sent the Stevens report.
It's at a microphone.
Commissioner Greathouse, in response to your question about the Stevens report, I think we've sent it, but I'll make sure we send it this afternoon to all of you again, if you need to see it again.
Great, thank you, really appreciate it. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you, next we have the presentation to the treasurer. Hello, Madam Treasurer.
Hello. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here to present the request for 2024 from the Treasurer's Office. Our general fund budget request for 2024 is $1,118,836. This is $215,714 less than our 2023 budget request. It is less than the Treasurer's Office request in 1990. We have no new items in our budget request. Our interest revenue increased from 9.5 million in 2022 to approximately 32.5 million in '23, and our '24 estimate is 35.7 million. We are requesting one less full-time employee, and for context, we already stand at roughly a third of the Franklin County's Treasurer's Office staff and less than half of the Montgomery County Treasurer's Office staff. This year so far, we've collected over $1.83 billion with only a 3.69 delinquency rate, and we're expecting that percentage to drop somewhat as we approach our tax lien sale. Our focus is to continue keeping our property tax delinquency rates low. We keep working with and helping delinquent taxpayers by offering them payment plans so that they can get a handle on how to bring them current with their taxes. We continue to work with groups such as CAA, Community Action Agency, Working in Neighborhoods, Legal Aid, and JFS to connect taxpayers with available funds to help pay delinquent property taxes. And we organize community events to inform people about those programs that are available to help them with their taxes. We continue to promote and expand easy pay tax payment methods such as eChecks through point and pay and automatic withdrawal. EChecks this year alone have seen a 33% increase, and more than 15% of all of our collections are now coming through point and pay, which contributes to our lower delinquency rate. We continue to promote the Treasurer's Optional Payment Program, which helps current and delinquent taxpayers better budget for more even payments throughout the year by paying their taxes monthly in advance. Our main concern is still making sure that we can compensate our employees properly so we can retain the high caliber of staff that we've come to expect and currently have. This allows us to continue to serve our taxpayers with the excellence they've come to expect. And we have a current starting salary rate of $19 per hour. With that, I'll turn it over to the commission if you have any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Can you highlight on here, you said that last year you asked, I think, for less money, and then this year as well. Could you highlight why is that?
Sure. The Treasurer's Office has had a lot of success with our Treasurer's Optional Payment Program. It's been in effect since 1993. It allows a taxpayer to prepay their real estate taxes into an escrow account with our office. So the program's been funded through a restricted fund generated from interest earned from monies in those accounts. Unfortunately, until interest rates rose in '22, there had been nominal interest earned to run the program. So to keep the program going, expenditures were being used from our general fund. But now that interest rates have risen, we're again able to run that program from the interest earnings in the restricted fund, therefore relieving the general fund of those expenses.
Awesome. Question, now, these letters have gone to every homeowner. It's not, it's not, I want to be clear, it's not mandated by the Treasurer of Hamilton County, it's not mandated by the Auditor of Hamilton County, and it's not mandated by the Board of County Commissioners. These reevaluation letters that could, I understand, have one of the largest uptick in reevaluations, and many citizens are very concerned about it. It may roll over to impact what is owed for property taxes that will be happening in January. We had a program, I know we had like $5 million to help with that. I'm concerned about, I've put this out, I'm putting it in my budget request. I'm interested in having some more money because I'm hearing from so many people. I mean, whether I go to the suburban areas or the urban areas, senior citizens. I know there's a bill, but I don't know if the bill's going to get passed in time to help seniors over 70 years of age. And I'm expecting, they said to be prepared for uptick in folks not being able to pay or, you know, even challenging it is a lot. You got to come down here, you got to go through a process. And we have not dealt with that at least, you know, in six years. I guess it goes every six years, so this will be something we haven't seen before. Is there anything, I know we have the CAA, but I don't know if their money's going to be running out. I just want to make sure as we're going into this budget that we're prepared to be able to help financially in an aggressive way with people that are going to be hit with the property taxes. It seems like everything new we are doing, they don't have to pay property taxes. Every project we're doing is a tax abatement, it's no tax. But on the homeowners, there is a tax. Is there anything or recommendation that we might need to be looking at as we, you know, go into our budget, helping with these? I know the numbers are down now, but the reevaluations have not hit yet.
So I'll take your question in a couple of pieces. The reevaluation letters that went out from the Auditor's Office, I believe are mandated by the state as an initial informational piece. Usually there is then, and this is for the Auditor's Office, not mine, so forgive me if I get some details wrong, but usually at that point, there's an informal process where they can contest, homeowners can contest value. Now, this year, the state was very late in getting their information to the Auditor's Office, which resulted in those letters going out much later than usual. And so there will be no informal contest period this time around. In terms of financial aid, the ARPA funds that were available through CAA and JFS are running out. I believe CAA may already be out of money. I'm not certain where JFS stands. So if there are available funds in the budget to help with property tax delinquencies, obviously we would welcome that. And then finally, we do expect to have a fairly robust Board of Revision schedule this year with homeowners who will be contesting their values. So, you know, at least as far as my office goes, we are trying to make people aware of how to access that process and sign up and what the best way to present your case is in a professional and effective manner.
Thank you, I appreciate that because there's a lot of people who've never had to, because I was, you know it's bad when you're in church and they stopping you. I can't even get the word, they stop me about what's going on with this. I've never had to, you know, what is that process? So I just wanted to highlight, I know that doesn't come directly in your budget, but I wanted us to, I want to put that on the table, that I'm looking at trying to find some funds because I think that's going to be a major situation. We've never had that in six years. These property evaluations are going up all over, not just our county, but that's all we worry about right now, but it's going all over. And I want to reiterate again, this is mandated by the state of Ohio, not by the Hamilton County Commission or Auditor or Treasurer. However, we will be the ones being, you know, our residents will be hit, so I'd like for us to look at some ways, Mr. Brugan, I want to just put that down, look at some ways what's available or what can we make available because it's going to hit pretty hard.
I do want to make just a point here that your taxes will not be going up consecutively proportionately with your property value increase. So if your property value has gone up 100%, you will not necessarily be paying 100% more in property taxes. There's a formula that comes from the state, has to do with levies that are passed and valuation and other factors, but it won't be one-to-one. So the people should not freak out quite that much.
Yeah, no, I understand, but some people say they can't go up $100 because they barely can pay what they got now. So, but there will be some uptick, and I just wanted to make sure we have something available so we don't increase the delinquency as you've already gotten that down, and we want to keep that down. I'll open it up, Vice President Greathouse.
Thank you, thank you, Treasurer Schiller, for being here and presenting. I was tempted to say, okay, stop, after the first two lines of your presentation because you said that you are asking for $215,714 less than the '23 budget. So, very good. Thank you for doing that, thank you for doing the work to, and everyone has really said this, you take this budget presentation process seriously, you're looking at your budget, you know you need to pay your employees a competitive wage, but we're all doing it within budget. So I really appreciate your diligence there and, you know, making sure that you are doing everything, your part really, to keep the budget on track, so I appreciate that. I didn't say that because there's maybe some lessons learned here from your office for others that might be having a difficult time keeping their budgets on track. So I really appreciate your diligence here. It's obvious that you've done the work, you've talked to your employees. So I don't have any questions, I'm just thankful for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Doumas? Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your presentation, thank you for your great leadership and being proactive as it relates to your budget. And I thank you as a taxpayer and all the other taxpayers that are not able to say that publicly. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, we'd love to stop there. No, just kidding, we have another presentation, sorry. No one wants to come after the Treasurer's Report, it's so good. Okay, next we have, I got to find my paperwork. Let's see. I gave my paperwork, is it OSU Extension? Oh, yes, OSU Extension, welcome.
Can you hear me, is this okay? Yes. Thank you for having me. My name is Victoria Fresh, and I am the area leader for OSU Extension in both Hamilton and Butler Counties. I am nervous, this is my first time presenting.
Oh, no, no, don't be nervous, just take your time.
Don't mind my jitters, but, all right. So I just really quickly wanted to go over a very brief history of how OSU ended up in Hamilton County. OSU is our state land grant. It was established as a land-grant university in 1862. Because of that, the property, the university will never be sold and never be closed. And our responsibility is to bring the resources of the university to all 88 counties in the state. And because of the Smith-Leaver Act, the Commissioners do support the extension offices in every county, both with funds and office space. So our work primarily falls in five programs, three of which are funded by the Commissioners, and then two which are funded by the USDA. So 4-H is our youth program that works with students from, anywhere from third grade up through when they graduate, and they work on projects literally ranging from livestock to robotics. So if you have ever been to a county fair and saw all of the animals that we're showing, those were 4-H kids, including here in Hamilton County. And we really work with a lot of schools, a lot of volunteers, and our one educator and her volunteers are serving just under 300 students in Hamilton County. Our other program that is supported by the Commissioners is our Agriculture and Natural Resources Program, which heavily focuses in Hamilton County on home horticulture, urban farmers, and supporting green industry professionals with training, education, and the Green Industry Conference, which happens in Sharonville. The third program that is supported by the Commissioners is our Master Gardener Volunteers Program, which trains volunteers in Cincinnati to work with school gardens, public green spaces, and other outdoor projects. You can also call our, call a Master Gardener hotline if you have a question about what is eating your tomato plants or what is wrong with your boxwood tree. That is a big deal right now. The two programs that are funded by the USDA but are housed in OSU Extension is our SNAP Ed program and our FNET program, which stands for the Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Programs. Those two programs are exactly what they sound like, and they serve families and young people to make sure that they understand how to use their SNAP benefits, healthy eating habits, good nutrition, how to use fresh produce, things of that nature. We also partner with a lot of organizations here in the city. So some of our big partners is the Cincinnati Zoo, the Civic Garden Center. We work with several Cincinnati Public Schools with 4-H. We just built a new relationship with Girl Scouts, and we do tours through Spring Grove, which sounds a little morbid, but it's actually really beautiful when you get to look around. For the last several years, we have not asked for an increase from the Hamilton County Commissioners. We have been funded at $50,000 since 2019, 2017, I'm sorry. And that has allowed us to just barely sustain with one educator that is funded by the county and barely clearing our operating expenses, which includes mileage. We do not get a lot of things free from the university, so we have to pay for our printers, we have to pay for our laptops, we rent our monitors. So there's very little support from the actual university. So we are just barely sustaining at the $50,000 level. Our ask for 2024 is $110,000. That would continue to support our current. That would continue to support our current 4H educator, support 25% of our office associate, and then two part-time program assistants for our 4H program, which would allow us to serve much, many more students in our area. But then it would also allow for more program collaboration, both within the county itself and within Extension, so that our programs can work together a little bit more. And that will also increase our general operating expenses so that our staff can have more mileage reimbursement, be able to purchase more program equipment and things of that nature. We just really would like to be able to do a little bit more in one of the more densely populated counties in our state. This page is just a comparison of some of the other county extensions in Ohio. So Montgomery County is currently getting $223,000. Lucas County gets $100,000, but they are requesting a small increase. And Franklin County gets $355,000 with 225 being their commissioner allocation and 130 being contracts with the county for other programs. For reference, Hamilton County has our one 4H educator. That is it, she does not have any help. She has a part-time person who was funded by a grant that will end next year. Montgomery County has two educators, two program coordinators, and their office associate on their Hamilton, or their county funds. Lucas has three educators and an office associate. And Franklin has five educators, one program coordinator, one program assistant, and their office associate. So we do believe that our request is in line with the size of our county and what counties of similar size are receiving. And that brings me to question, that's just my favorite picture, she was so intent on that piece of wood.
We love it, well, thank you for your presentation, I will open it up for questions, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Vice President Drea.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for the presentation, thank you for meeting before the presentation in my office to get a little bit more in-depth with what the presentation was about. I have really an affinity for 4H, I've come to, I didn't understand it very well when I first got here, I will admit, to the County Commission back in 2017, but I've grown to understand it and appreciate the work. The one thing though, and I don't think we did, I did mention this to you in the office, I don't think 4H has a relationship with the Hamilton County Fair. I think 4H is up at Stricker's Grove instead. And so because the county has an interest in having the Hamilton County Fair be successful, and I know the relationship is challenging, but I do think it would be a huge benefit if 4H would collaborate with the Hamilton County Fair at our fairgrounds, which as you know, we all own, and renew that conversation to try to, you know, connect the dots there. Because I think without them there, there is, you know, there's a deficit.
There's a disconnect.
Yeah, yeah, right. Well, not only a disconnect, but also not as much for the citizens when they go to the fair to see, because 4H isn't there. So I just, I bring that up because it's been a few years since that, those two organizations separated. And it's certainly not to the benefit of the county residents to have those two things happening in different locations. I don't think a lot of people even know that 4H is up at Stricker's Grove instead of the county fair. So just want to put that in your mind as we think through, you know, funding more positions and creating expansion of the work. It would be great if there was that added benefit to all of that.
I 100% agree and would love any guidance on how to mend that relationship. It has been sour for quite some time and we understand the disadvantages. It's even hard for our 4H kids to get all the way out there. So we would 100% love to be back in the heart of Hamilton County. I live right down the street from the fairgrounds and I remember what the fair was like when, when it was the fair. So we would very much like to mend that relationship and any assistance or guidance or contacts to help us do that would be deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Douglas. Chair, thank you for your presentation. How much money does Ohio State actually give for this program?
So Ohio State currently funds my Agriculture and Natural Resources educator because he's faculty. There is a path for our educators to become university faculty, other than that, that is about it. The remaining funds for our 4H educator come from the state and I'm paid through the state.
I'm just a little confused, not from what you said, but where their priority is as far as Ohio State. Because I'm, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking, does this need to be a Hamilton County project? I don't know, there are benefits, I'm sure by connecting with a university, but they're not, it doesn't seem like a priority to me. I remember when I first came, there was a educator who just left, you probably know him. It took forever, forever to get him paid, you know, it was just one staff person. But what you do, there should be more funding, in my opinion. We talked about just a minute ago about the Hamilton County Fairgrounds, so that's a, sort of said that the board is supportive of that, I'm not particularly supportive of the, of the fairgrounds and where we are right now, we can do so much more. I know they have animals over there, I'm not sure where they get their animals from or whatever. But right now, I'm concerned about you and this program. And I don't see any reason for me why we wouldn't increase the amount that you get. But also looking at ownership, I mean, what's the benefit of having Ohio State say this is their program and we're increasing the money? So, but you didn't really specifically say how much Ohio State gives to this.
So Ohio State does not provide any direct funding to us.
Just, go ahead.
I, I am not, to be completely honest, I am not sure why that is. We, as, Extension as a program, is housed within the College of Food, Environmental Service, or Agricultural Sciences. We are the original college of the university. OSU started as the Ohio College of Agriculture. Some were along the line, they forgot about the little agriculture school and the program within the school. And several years before my arrival, we were, we used to be centralized within CFAES. We had our own HR, our own finance people, but then they moved all of that up to the university level. So we have been trying to get back in the forefront with the university without causing too much of a rift. And we would love to have more support from the university, but at least at the county level, we have very little control over that. We make a bunch of noise, we do make a bunch of noise, but it hasn't been very effective yet.
Whoever listens to me when I'm here up on the board, names are important. And so when I say names are important, Ohio State University, your project is so important considering environmentally how we need to know how to garden and all of those kinds of things. And I'm just wondering why their name is all over here, here I go with names, but you know, you were asking for 110,000. And yeah, that's, I think you're doing a great job. And I'm just looking at the trajectory of this program and where we might want to take it.
And I would like to also say, given that we don't get a lot of support from the university, what my hope is, is in the ask for this increase, that I'm able to then go and raise other, because unlike some of the other departments, we're able to fundraise independently. So I am able to go to places like the Greater Cincinnati Foundation or Fifth Third Bank and try to raise other funds. So my hope is that I would be able to leverage support from the Commissioners to say to other organizations and funders that this program is important. To answer your question completely, honestly, they make us put OSU on everything. So we are, we're housed with them and we are kind of in a rock and a hard place. People ask us that all the time, just what support does the university give you? And it's, it's not what we would like it to be, they kind of leave us to fend for ourselves, to be completely honest. I would say one area where we might get some port, some support is that we have a department that goes and talks to like the bigger whigs in the state, kind of on our behalf, but not very much from the university.
So I know this has been a tradition for a while, was of course here when I first came, but you said you can go out and do fundraising, that's all well and good, but I want you to be busy with the kids and the programming and all that and have sufficient enough money to be able to do what your group needs to do, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, I wanted to, some people who are watching may not understand why in our county budget we have OSU Extension. And I know in your PowerPoint, you mentioned that they became land grant status. And I was very active in the land grants, land grant status process with Central State. So I learned a lot about that. And once you get the land grant status, then, you know, it's like you got to have some funding for federal to match the funding. But OSU got it a long time ago, you have 1862. And this is one of those issues that came up and about how our county government, how county governments work out of 88 counties. We basically, I feel like we're like a franchise of the, of the state. And so I had asked about this question, Mr. Brugan, you can chime in on this. It's in the state ORC, right, that we do something with the land grant, it's not optional with Ohio State. Extension specifically, not Central State, is not in the law. But Ohio State University is in the law that the counties must do, can you speak to that?
That, that's correct, it's in the law and I know the clearly required piece is the space.
Yes.
Required to provide space for OSU Extension. I believe beyond that, there has been a time, there was a long period of time where Hamilton County was giving nothing in addition for operations.
That's correct.
So we're obligated to give space, but not obligated to give any funding.
That's correct.
And then, and that's, yeah, that's interesting, we give space.
We weren't funding this when I was here, in the very beginning.
There was a very long period of time where we were not getting county funding.
Yep.
Okay, so law says we have to give space, that's in the budget, we pay rent, I guess, for the space that they're in. Okay, because I had asked about Central State and they are not in the, any of the law, even though they're land.
I've been reaching out to Central State to try to build a relationship with them as well. They're a new land grant university, this is new to them, it's new to me too. But we want to work more closely with them as well to kind of reach as many people as we can.
I just want to say if we're, I want to put out there, if we're looking at a funding piece that's not mandated by state law, then I would like to see or hear from Central State to see how there's some synergy together with the two. I know state, on a state level, they've been working together. But I want to know on the, on our level, because I know they, they were looking for space and, and some things too. I know they're, they have to go and raise money on their own as well. But what I want to really see is, I hear there's a lot of money in the US Department of Agriculture. We've had some people that came and testified and said we're leaving a lot of money on the table. And the sec, one of the under secretaries came to town and was saying we're leaving a lot of money on the table. So for me, you know, as we go into any type of increase, I want to see how can we, one, work closer together with Central State and OSU. And then I also want to see a plan of how we could get some more of these dollars that could come in.
Currently waiting to hear back on a USDA grant, I'm not sure exactly which one. Cincinnati Zoo is the lead on it though, and we're on it as contractors because it'd be a lot easier just for getting the funding in the door. So we've been working on some of those things. My team up, I've been in this role for about a year, a little more than a year. Prior to that, my team did not have anyone in my position full-time for five or six years. So they were literally just sustaining, like they were just staying above water. So now that I've been able to come take some of those responsibilities of like finding their own funding and I can make connections and kind of, you know, do the alley-oop, now they're able to think more about what partnerships can we make? How can we get a contract with these folks? How can we find other sources of funding? So we are 100% looking into that and I just got approval from the university to raise funds myself. So I am, and shameless plug, John was my first like fundraising mentor. So I, I've learned from some of the best, but I am really digging into ways that we can get USDA funds. There are some programming that we can do around homeownership and get some funding there. We have, gosh, there's so many different programs that we could be doing. So I'm really interested in tracking down literally every dollar that we can find. Because I believe in the program and I don't expect the Commissioners to be funding us at 100%. So I do really want to, this is kind of like our, our ask to get us going. And hopefully in a couple of years, I can come in and say, we're asking for $200,000, but we're not there yet. But I am really interested in all of those different government funds, local funds, increasing our volunteer base, you name it, I am interested in it.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And I just get a sense of energy from you that's, you know, ready to go. And it's just been a delight to have your presentation and your energy. And it seems like you're very passionate about this, so we really appreciate the presentation and thank you, you did an excellent job.
Thank you, you're gonna have a wonderful day.
You too, thank you.
I was just wondering.
Both of y'all been jumping up now, I'm going to get this gavel.
I thought you said Commissioner.
I know.
I just wanted to know what county is Central State University in?
Oh, I want to say Montgomery?
Yeah.
I think it's Montgomery.
They're out in Xenia, they're in Xenia. But the university's in Xenia, but they have their extension, just like Ohio State.
Supposed to serve the entire state.
The whole state.
Okay.
Yeah, so they have, and they've been doing partnerships with New Prospect Baptist Church. Because they have all the stuff behind the church that they have, Mill Creek and those kind of things.
They are stretched very thin, so we are understanding that they may not quite have the time to partner with us and sit down and figure out what that looks like. But our 4H educator at least does try to make sure that she's not stepping on their toes or, you know, going to an organization and offering our 4H and they're like, well, we already talked to 4H. So we're trying our best to, to build a relationship, but they're, they're trying to get their, their extension off the ground and we're just, we're trying.
Yeah, well, Amber Twitty, who is very interested, and she, the one who came to us about the space of saying if they could do some joint space, they've done some things with Aiken High School, I was out there. I didn't know they had all those chickens back there. But they had the under secretary in town and he came and he was out at Aiken. So I learned a lot about that, so I, that's why I asked Jeff about how can they better partner. Their thing is focused really on African-American children and getting involved with 4H and, you know, how to raise chickens and how to monetize that kind of stuff. I don't know the stuff, all I know is USDA under secretary says a whole lot of money and I said, we need it in Hamilton County.
We have a lot of space, so if they are interested in using our space, you all put us in a beautiful space that has literally made every other Extension County jealous. So we have plenty of space, we are able to do programming in our own space. We're just up the street on Reading Road, as close to downtown as you can be with reparking and tons and tons of room. So we would love to offer them some space to do some programming if they are open to it.
Good, well, I think the two, just from this energy from her and you, I think we could move and get some things going. And I do think that I learned a lot from the Central State Extension process and fought really hard. They got the land grant status, but then they got zero dollars. Then we had to fight to get, get some money so that the federal would match it, because they only match.
Because they were, yes, ma'am.
So we got that on track, but then I was on the state fair board and I saw a lot of kids come in with 4H and I got to milk a cow, because I wanted more entertainment. And they said, we'll do more entertainment if the city girl will milk the cow. And I did it, y'all, I did it, but I didn't grow up with that.
Right.
I wanted to, you know, have our kids to be able to grow up.
Right.
You know.
And then even with the fairground, if we were able to rebuild that relationship, we are in an urban county, kids do not have space to be keeping pigs and horses and all that kind of stuff like they do out in Butler County. So even just having somewhere that these animals could be, where their kids could tend to them and learn about the animal would be absolutely amazing because our 4H kids here are, they can't do livestock really, anything bigger than maybe rabbits. So we are missing a lot of opportunity not being centrally located with the fair. For, so I'm 100% in agreeance with that.
Awesome, well, thank you, I think we got some great synergies going and partnerships. Awesome. Well, thank you. I think we got some great synergies going and partnerships. And I think this is a great way for us to, do we have another one?
Nope, I'm it.
Oh, we ended on a good.
I'm the last one.
Say, get on the good foot.
Yes, ma'am.
Get on the good foot. Mr. Brugan, do you want to close us out on anything, our budget direction?
I have nothing further to do.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing further, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Jimmison?